Good morning. Welcome to our county commission meeting for November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'm going to take a moment for personal privilege and just wish my grandson a happy first birthday, my youngest grandchild. So happy birthday to Grady and welcome to everybody here. I'm calling our meeting to order and note for the record that we do have a full quorum of commissioners present. Before we get started, just a reminder, silence your cellphone and if you're going to speak today on any agenda item, please sign in in the back. We need your name for public record. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Look for a motion to approve our agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Heisey, second by Kipley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on any item on our consent agenda? Right? Is there anybody, any commissioner that would like to comment or remove an item from the consent agenda? Commissioner Benega.
I would just like to make a comment. Last week, we spent five million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, almost nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in expenses and costs. But of that number, three million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand was actually remitted to the state. So we are collecting fees, collecting revenue for the state that's get passed through us that we are responsible for. So we become a quote, branch manager for the state of South Dakota. When you look at the gross number of almost six million dollars in expenses, literally three and a half million of it going to the state.
Thank you, Commissioner. I went through the twenty-eight pages of the bills to be paid also and found a few interesting ones, like the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit, who audits us every year because we spend their money. We get to pay them sixty-four thousand and six hundred dollars. The ambulance district, we paid off the second half of the years to most of the ambulance districts, a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Rural fire, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand almost. And we, to the city of Sioux Falls for our fourth quarter library contribution, we paid three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So a lot of money does go from the county to other government entities. So thank you for that. I'd look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Please call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our regular business. Our first item is the SDSU Extension Minnehaha County Four-H Program Updates. No voting on this, just an update. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Nathan Skatson, SDSU Extension Minnehaha County Four-H. Today this morning, we're here just to present a kind of update of our year end for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five Four-H year. Our Four-H year runs from October first through September. And so we kind of have some highlights we'd like to share with you today. The snapshot document I handed out to each of you, too. We aren't going to go through every paragraph on there, but we do this to kind of provide an overview for all of our stakeholders as to what our program is doing. So I will let Aubrey introduce herself and talk about some of the programming she led this past year.
Yes. Good morning. I'm Aubrey Anderson, again, Minnehaha County Four-H. One of the exciting programs we did this summer was called the Family Consumer Science Summer Series. There's a contest in Four-H where students have to study and identify items from three different categories. And the desire was to really bring that into the real world. One of our focuses is helping youth be beyond ready for work and for life. And so we took this program. We thought there's great local businesses in the food area with sewing, with interior design and architecture that we can connect kids to, expose them to careers in our community, and help them see the value in what they're doing in Four-H and how that can apply to their future life. So we partnered up with Maury's Steakhouse, Lloyd Companies, and Always Your Design Quilt Shop in Del Rapids. And there was great conversation around careers, career paths, what people like about being in our area, and just getting kids excited about what is potentially there. Another thing that we do connected to life skills is one of our kind of perennial programs, which is Chicks in the Classroom. We increased that up to seventeen classrooms of first graders this year and really taking them through all of kind of poultry embryology, hatching eggs in the classroom, teaching them a little bit about agriculture, exposing them to that world, and also where their food comes from, which is a huge thing to realize as you go on in life.
So we'll look at the second page here now and some of the numbers, just to give you an idea of the reach of our program. Our mastery members, so those are youth that we've identified as mastering an area of Four-H this year. It was mainly youth that scored highly in their livestock areas at the South Dakota State Fair. So scored highly in showing, in their showmanship, and then the skill-a-thons associated with their livestock breeds. Enrolled members, those are members that actually go through and sign up as Four-H members. So those are the ones that are served by our community clubs. We had three hundred and sixty-five of those. Outreach members, those are youth that we reached through the non-traditional Four-H, so outside of community clubs. That's us going to the schools to do Chicks in the Classroom, going to after-school programs like Boys and Girls Club, and then working on some community events like Egg Days at the Pavilion, the Sioux Empire Water Fest, and the SDSU Engineering Day at the Pavilion. So that gives us a total membership of six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three, which would be approximately thirteen percent of the county youth that we've reached. As always, our goal is fifteen, stretch goal is twenty. We are hoping, I'm pretty confident this next year we can reach fifteen because we have a couple more partnerships that we're working on. There's the, what is the Science Day coming up?
Farm Steam.
Yeah, Farm Steam Day that is being organized by Hood Magazine that we've been invited to participate in. And then we also just yesterday met with Ms. Martin, who's the egg teacher with the Sioux Falls School District, and discussed a lot of possibilities of us partnering with her and some of those kids that are taking egg classes with Sioux Falls School District. We're also planning on expanding our Chicks in the Classroom and then adding some Adopt a Cow programming to elementary schools as well, which is, we talk about beef and dairy production. The biggest part of our program, though, is our volunteers. So we had seventy-two full-time volunteers. So those are volunteers that once again enroll through the program. They are background checked. They have to complete paperwork every year. And we had fifty-seven short-term helpers. We identified those as folks that help us with judging, people that might come and present at a club meeting, but those are not certified. They don't get fully enrolled. And so we always, those volunteers are always present when, only present when our certified volunteers are. So given that, we estimate about just over eight thousand volunteer hours was given to the Minnehaha County Four-H Program this past year. And then using our salary as kind of a base for what that would be equivalent to a staff position, that would be two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars as the return of investment for volunteers. So that's, like I tell them every time we meet, there literally would not be a Four-H program without them. They're a huge part of our program and the interaction that our youth have, an important part of Four-H, is giving our youth additional positive male, male and female adult role models. So it's not just parents, it's not just grandparents, it's other members of their community who can be positive role models for them because that's been shown to have a great impact on kids' lives. One program I started this last year, under our workforce development, I'd like to highlight quick, is working with Ben Rifle Middle School. And one of their social study teachers, they do a program where every Wednesday, they call it Bison Hour, I believe. I hope I got that right. But anyway, it's just a chance for the kids to kind of explore different areas. So once again, they do like a horticulture, they do art, they do like esports and stuff. And what I have been doing the past, this previous school year and now this school year is going in and doing an introduction to robotics class. And we've had really great feedback, great impact with that. This last school year, it was a hundred and fifty-three students. And I did give them a very simple pre and post test where I asked them about their knowledge of robotics before the class and then after. And just using that very simple test, it did show a thirty percent increase in knowledge across all the classes. So it's always nice to be able to see that what we're doing actually leads to something and not just something thirty years down the line. So that's a cool program. I've had other schools kind of reach out with interest of adding something like that as well. So kind of a big focus, like I've said, going forward is expanding more into our schools because once again, it's a lot easier to go to where the youth are than to try to get them to come to you. So yeah, I'll turn it back over to Aubrey here about some of the recognition we'd like to give some of our members and volunteers.
Absolutely. One of the big benefits from being involved in Four-H is youth are four times more likely to be involved in their community going forward, which is amazing. That's what we need in our communities, youth that are engaged and involved. One way we foster that is really trying to recognize those youth that are starting to show those qualities. So at the Sioux Empire Fair this year, we were able to identify three Four-H members that really kind of stepped out and went above and beyond in helping and assisting with several of our different events, really took initiative, interacting with adults, helping to set up and plan and organize and implement multiple events. So one of those was a junior youth, Caitlin Mueller, and then Isabella and Brianna Zurosov. We were able to recognize them at the fair and at our county recognition event, just the work that they were putting into and how that impacts the community as a whole. And we also were able to recognize one of our adult volunteers at the state, South Dakota State Fair. She was be able to be recognized as an emerging volunteer at the state and in the Hall of Fame. She's taken a very active role in our county program, especially with our junior leaders. So those are middle school and high school students. She's been very active and very passionate about helping them get connected to different workforce experiences because that's what they're expressing they want to learn about, is careers and options for them. And she's taken the lead on setting up various tours and experiences for those youth and also helping at our state Four-H camp and just pouring back into those youth. And she was a Four-H member herself as a kid. So we're seeing the full circle there of what you do as a youth absolutely impacts what they do as adults.
So like I said, there's more on these documents and feel free to reach out to us if you have any questions about any of the other things we highlighted. But we just wanted to give you an update today. Thank you, guys, for your support and are available for any questions after, if there's any public comment.
Thank you, Nathan and Aubrey. Any public comment on this agenda item? Commission, any questions or comments? Commissioner Blainberg.
Thank you, Chair. I was just curious, how do schools or classrooms get connected with you? Does that start with you or does that start with a teacher or a school?
Starts with the schools. As you are well aware, Sioux Falls School District is huge. And so it's, we can't just like go and knock on the door and be like, hey, we got something to teach you guys. So it's, it's been word of mouth and it's been teachers moving in between schools, too. So like last year, we added Hayward because one of their first grade teachers, student taught at Harvey Dunn the previous year. And so when she got her job at Hayward, she reached out and was like, hey, I would like to do this program. So it's been word of mouth, which has been good because it's also, we aren't quite at the capacity to do every single elementary school in Sioux Falls yet. Maybe someday we could, but it's kind of helped that growth be gradual. So yes, if there are any kindergarten or first grade teachers you know who might be interested, have them reach out to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You cast a wide net. It's a variety of so many different things. Kind of a personal shout-out here. I see where my daughter-in-law's younger sister was the top exhibitor in both English showmanship and hunt seat, hunt seat equitation. Yeah, but cool to see your name on there. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Consider a motion to authorize use of personnel savings for non-personnel-related expenses. Daniel, morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Daniel Hager, Minnehaha County State's Attorney, asking the commission for approval to use, I guess what is kind of bad news. We have hundred and seventy-five thousand anticipated salary savings. Those are people that weren't in the office working this year, unfortunately, just from staffing. Auditor Anderson, Susan Beeman have done a nice job helping us figure out what those amounts are going to be. So certainly appreciate their expertise in that area. But from that hundred and seventy-five thousand, we are asking the commission to approve thirty-five thousand dollars for us to use to purchase furniture for our training room. It'll ultimately be, I anticipate, is twelve tables, twenty-four chairs. We have been using the training room. This year, we've conducted twenty-five trainings in-house. We've covered topics like jury selection, cross-examination. We've had the DEA come in and talk, the state health lab, partners from DSU talking about Celebrate Axiom Use. So very beneficial trainings. This would allow us to utilize that space. And again, we anticipate having that money saved in salary savings. Happy to answer any questions.
Public comment on this agenda item? Questions, comments from the commission? Action?
Mr. Chair, I'll just comment. I appreciate the State's Attorney running this through the auditor's office and the budget process. Yes, I think we'd all agree, we'd rather be fully staffed and be using this on payroll. But also, I think the furniture to outfit that training room, I think, is actually a recruitment tool for you. So when we talk about strategies, tactics to recruit more staff, attorneys, all of the above to your office, I think that training room is going to be a tool in your toolkit to show off and showcase how you can bring attorneys in. And maybe, maybe you can just give us a little bit of how that has been used so far. And at one point, I think we were doing a video showcase of it to highlight it to the USD law students or whatever as a recruitment tool.
Yeah, it definitely has been something that when we have individuals come in for tours, when we have prospective, future lawyers, that is an attractive piece of the office now. They see that mock courtroom. We have used that to acclimate victims to what the setting will look like when they are in court. So that's another piece that's underrated, but being able to take a child in there, have them sit, kind of understand where the lawyers that are going to be asking questions will be, where the jury will be, helps them feel more comfortable, which leads to good results. The students have liked it. It's very attractive when we're able to show that off. I do want to honor just where that money is coming from, right? When you have taxpayer money that is paying for things. When we had remodeled the office originally, we had space. We were able to get used furniture from Human Services. So that's currently what's in our small conference room. So we weren't spending large amounts during that remodel, just knowing that there was a lot of moving parts to that. But now that we've kind of settled in, we did reach out to Human Services to see if they had any old tables, chairs. They don't have anything that really works in that space. But again, I think that this training area is a good thing for recruitment. Certainly, the students who are coming through the office see that and see an investment in what their career will be and what their future will look like. And so I think it'll continue to pay dividends.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second. Call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a resolution authorizing the commencement of a civil action. Good morning, Katie.
Good morning. Katie Dunn, Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office, Deputy State's Attorney. I'm here to ask the board to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a resolution authorizing the commencement of a civil action to foreclose a county aid lien. Specifically, we're asking to foreclose lien one-one-eight-four-one-five. It's a lien for costs associated with court-appointed counsel for an individual by the name of Damian Lorelles. He has currently ninety thousand dollars worth of bond that has been posted in his name that's being held with the Minnehaha County Clerk Courts. We would like the authority to pursue a civil action to foreclose on that, to recoup costs totally near twenty-seven thousand dollars that have been paid by the county thus far.
Okay. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, questions, action?
Mr. Chair, just how frequently does this issue come up? I feel like this is a new one for me.
This is a rarity. Typically, individuals who qualify for court-appointed counsel are indigent and remain indigent throughout the case. This was a situation where bond was posted. The, the party that posted the bond authorized the release back to Mr. Lorelles. And so because it's, we have a legal argument that it's his property and it's there, we want to be able to foreclose on it to recoup the costs.
Okay. Thank you for that context. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a joint powers agreement between Minnehaha County and the state and the South Dakota Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of County Highway one-thirty and South Dakota Highway eleven. Good morning, Jacob.
Good morning, Commissioner. Jacob Mars, Highway Superintendent. The DOT is replacing a couple of bridges on South Dakota Highway eleven. This is just north of Corson, north of Brandon. Two-hundred-and-fifty-eighth Street right here is County Highway one-thirty. The project they're doing is going to significantly raise Highway eleven. This intersection, for instance, is going to raise approximately ten feet in the air, which is a pretty, pretty large grade raise. And as part of that, they're going to end up reconstructing County Highway one-thirty from about here to here. And they, we just need an agreement with them in order for them to do that work. And when they were scoping that project, they were going to stop somewhere down here with the grading work. And I said, hey, this is a really bad railroad crossing. What do you think about dragging your project up to here? And then the county would finish grading from the end of your work up to the railroad tracks because we have a pretty good working relationship with BNSF within the county. Generally, it takes a long time to get permits from the state. It's kind of a drawn-out process. But we've had really good luck working locally with the local roadmasters and they'll, they'll provide us flaggers if we give them a couple weeks' notice. So this, this agreement calls out our portion of the work, which would be from the edge, end of the DOT work limits up to the railroad tracks, which should help that crossing significantly. And then it lets the DOT work within our right-of-way adjacent to Highway eleven.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, questions, comments, action? Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you. When you reference the intersection with the railroad tracks, would the improvement be to rideability? What would the improvement be for the?
Yeah, the improvement right there would be rideability. So the, the road, the road is kind of steep right there. And then the railroad tracks are, are flat or level-ish. So with this project, they bring the road up. We bring the road up to the railroad tracks and just try to make that crossing a little flatter.
Jacob, walk me through this. Is the state doing all the work and we're paying them for that hundred feet? Or are we contracting out for the hundred feet? Or we're going to have simultaneous two different work crews working out there?
Yeah, so the DOT will hire a contractor and they will work up to the railroad right-of-way. And then county forces internally will come out and work from within the, the railroad right-of-way, from the end of the DOT project up to the tracks, which is plus or minus a hundred feet.
So you're going to have your own crew out there. It won't be another contracted crew.
No, no. We've, we've done similar work to this in the past and that allows us a lot more flexibility as far as working with their contractor and getting there in timely manner.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider bid results and award recommendation for Project MC two thousand and thirteen, Structure Fifty, two-thirty-seven-one-twenty, replacement and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with BX Civil and Construction Pending, South Dakota DOT. Concurrent bids open on October twenty-ninth. Jacob.
Yes, Jacob, Highway Department. Again, this is a big grant that we received from the DOT recently bid, October twenty-ninth. We received excellent bids from, from eight different contractors. This is a structure on a township road. We're replacing a bridge with a box culvert, which allows us to get rid of the guard rail, some additional delineation that farmers generally, it's in their way of their larger equipment. So this will be a big improvement for that roadway, beside the fact that we're taking the, taking the load posting off that bridge. Eight bidders, low bid was four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven fifty-nine from BX Civil and Construction. They've completed two of their projects for us in the last two years and done, done really good work. So excited to work with them again. Something I'd like to point out is the grant that we were awarded from South Dakota DOT was for six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. With this project, we'll only actually be using three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars of that work. And this is something that Susan and I have been working on recently. Our grant revenue doesn't always match up with, actuals don't always match up with predicted. And a lot of that is because we get really good prices for our bid work. And there is, there's quite a bit of contingency that is built into the grant as well because during COVID, we had some years where construction prices are really high. So the DOT let us add an extra percentage for contingency in there. So our grant award was six hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We're actually only going to use three hundred and ninety-eight. So our expected grant revenue will be approximately two hundred and eighty thousand less than what is predicted for this project. But we, it's money that we could only use if we were building the bridge itself. So it just goes back to the DOT big grant pool and somebody else can get awarded for it after our project is closed out.
Interesting. Public comment? All right. Commission?
I'd make a motion to award the contract.
Second. Motion a second. I do have one question, Jacob. That's a lot of bids. Is that unusual to receive that many bids or is that getting to be typical?
It's, it's getting to be more common, I'd say, for the last two years. There've been quite a few contractors. The, lucky for us, a lot of them work around this area and their, their staff is local to here. So we get pretty good prices, a lot of competition on our bridges.
Good to know. Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, we have a briefing to discuss proposed increases in building permit valuation schedule. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. This is a briefing for building permit fee schedule. Minnehaha County enforces the International Building Code, family of codes, to support the cost of implementation and enforcement of the codes. We do have a fee schedule for building permits. And that fee schedule typically gets updated periodically when the building code gets updated. When the building code would have been updated this last fall or last summer, but there was no update through a few different prob, our processes decided that the update was not going to be happening that year. So we're, the last fee schedule update was in two thousand and twenty-two, so we're looking to update it now. The Planning Department is recommending a graduated valuation increase for, with a higher increase. higher increase on finished area than an unfinished area. Just for some comparison, finished habitable space will have an increased valuation of 8%, where finished basement is 5%. And then unfinished basement, attached garages and detached garages will have a 1% increase. So that when you, when you put that along the, like a new house, an average house within the county, that does have an average increase of 5.9% for the building permit fee or approximately $82 for a building permit fee for a new house. The expected revenue increase for the county would be approximately $7,000 based on what building permits were taken in 2024. I'll bring, I did submit, this is the historical fees increases. We have done a kind of a mix of both flat rate fee increases and some graduated fee increases to keep the compression from the various different building types. Here is example of a building permit fee for a new home, using averages from the last couple of years for the house sizes. So that's where the $82 comes into place, where they have the current valuation and then their new valuation. And then the fee is based on .04%, or .4%, excuse me, of the valuation. So that's where that fee comes into place. And yes, this is a briefing for the request to take action on this on November 25th. And then the proposed effective date would be January 1st, so it would be effective in the new year. Is there any questions?
Public comment on this agenda item. All right, this is just a briefing. We don't need any action. Questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, one quick question. Good morning, Kevin. Just curious how often the county typically raises fees like this? Is it every three, four years or what is it traditionally then?
Yeah, typically it's every three years because the building code cycle updates every three years. And like I said, we didn't update the building code in this last cycle. So this would tend to take place without that update.
And would it be fair to say, generally speaking, that these rises in fees reflect inflation and increasing costs of housing and other property?
Yeah, so the, the proposed fee increase do reflect at least close to the increases and probably underneath, if you look at the, I do have a slight report in, or a small section where I looked up Minneapolis Fed Consumer Price Index and we are underneath that consumer price index for the last three years, so.
Thank you.
For one, I'm glad to see that we keep an eye on this. In a meeting yesterday with the mayor, he commented out the city of Sioux Falls is probably 13, 14 years behind looking at these fees. And at the same meeting was a legislator who asked me, you know, do you guys keep updated on your fees? So appreciate the fact that this is going on. The last page, do you have, can you scroll down to that? Just trying to do the math in my head here. Yeah, that one. So dwelling site built, if somebody's adding a deck, the, what, how does the 30, 75 per square foot? I mean, if I'm adding a 600 square or 200 square foot deck, am I paying $600 for building permit to add that deck? How does that work?
No, so the, if you're adding, say, 100 square foot deck, you take that $30.75 times the square footage, so you're 370, or $300. But then you take the total times the multiplier, .4%.
Oh.
So i- in most deck cases, if it's just the deck, it rarely drops below that $60 or above that $60 minimum building permit fee. So $60 is the minimum and many improvements and projects do meet that $60 minimum.
I appreciate that. I've never been very good at word problems with math, so I didn't read the whole equation there. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Weinberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Where does the revenue from these fees land in our budget?
I, I don't even know, to be honest. I think, yep, you had some help with that.
Thank you, Susan.
Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. The building fee, permit fee revenue comes into the planning department's revenue objects and is part of the general fund revenue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Briefing of expected and potential budget supplements. Don't sit down too quick, Susan. Good morning.
Good morning, Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. Today, we just wanted to give you a briefing of kind of where we are sitting for the year with items as far as from a budgetary perspective. We are sitting in a very good position in total across the county budget for both revenue as well as expenditures. We have a few isolated cases where department budgets are, are going to need either a budget supplement or are going to maybe need to request use of salary savings to cover budget shortfalls. So just to remind you, departments cannot use salary savings to offset other expenditure line items on their budget. If there's an overage in those, in that other expenditure category, they need to bring that forward to the commission for, for your authorization to do that. So the numbers I'm, and the departments that I'm going to share today are preliminary. We are still working through a few things with this. It will, the departments could change as well, some of the numbers could change between now and the actual budget hearing in December, but we wanted to at least give you a briefing of where we are at today. So this is through October of 2025 is where we are sitting today. So the first items are within the general fund. The first supplement that we are anticipating is the courts. We are at least anticipating a budget supplement need of about $100,000 to subsidize that department. We are currently already over budget on items for the interpreters as well, as well as child defense attorneys. Additionally, we do project court reporters and attorney fees, those for adult cases are going to be over budget by the end of the year. The next item is the public defender's office. We are projecting that they will be over budget by roughly $190,000. This is due to a couple of areas. One, our salary expenses related to the comp study, the addition of pathway interns. And, and then the next item is related to psyche valves and interpreter needs are exceeding their budget. And additionally, we began leasing office space this year. So those are all things that are causing their budget to be over budget. The next item on our list is the jail. The jail is, is anticipated to be within budget in total, but their other expenditure area is projected to be over budget primarily due to their food costs for their, for their inmates. They do have salary savings to, that can absorb that. But again, this will be one of those items that we would need to request your permission to use those salary savings to cover that other expenditure shortfall for that overage in the food budget. And that food budget item is over budget due to a combination of price increases as well as the census and special, specialty needs for special diets. The next item is juvenile detention center. We are anticipating being over budget on their salaries for a combination of comp study, part-time staff, holidays, et cetera, of about 200,000. But we do anticipate they'll have some savings within their other expense area. So we, right now, are projecting a supplement of about 120,000. And then the last item on the general fund at this time is airport security. The airport security budget is, is projected to be over budget by about $17,000. This again is primarily due to salaries, part of it compensation study, as well as overtime and part-time salaries. And just to remind you, on the airport budget, that is 100% reimbursement contract. So we'll have additional revenue to offset that overage on the expenses, but we do still need to do a supplement to increase the budget for the salaries. And then lastly, the domestic abuse fund will require a supplement as well. That is a fund that, whatever we collect in, we pay out. So the budget for this year was $67,000. So we ended up receiving more revenue in, which means we, we did our allocations back to those partners to, to balance out what we received. So the net impact to the fund is the same revenue offset the expenses, but we do need to have that supplement. So I'll just pause there if you have any questions at this time.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Commission, questions? This is just a briefing, no action?
Mr. Chair, a question?
Please.
Morning, Susan. When we're talking about budget supplements, is that money, assuming we were to vote on it, coming from our reserves? Or is money being transitioned or moved from different departments that are coming under budget? Or maybe you can explain that?
It would be an increase to the budget. So if every other department had spent all of their budget, then it would be an increase from reserves. My most recent estimate for the overall general fund is we're running about 4% under budget across the general fund. When we talk about budget, when we plan for like next year's budget, we assume a 3% saving. So we're roughly, we're running a little bit over that on savings. So we plan to have a 3% underspending budget. We're running around a 4% underspending budget. So when we do these supplements, there's a number of other departments that are under budget that would offset that, if that makes sense. Additionally, revenue right now is projected to be about 1% above a budget. There's a couple of bigger items that are still estimates at this time. We won't have the final numbers. We, we still are working on property tax collections. We know that we generally get about 99% of our property taxes collected by the end of the year. Right now, we're trending around 97%. So we'll see how things end up in the next six weeks as far as if that next 1.5% come in or not, as well as like we have a very big unknown with bank franchise. We don't really know what that number will be, if it'll be over budget, at budget. But right now, the projection is we'll be about 1% over budget on revenue. So there are plenty of dollars within the expense savings as well as the revenue projections for overage on budget to offset these supplement requests.
Thank you. Susan, put a number to 1% on expenses and 1% on revenue. What?
So the, on the expense number, and I, just because I know 2026 budget, because I just was looking at that, it's roughly a million dollars. So 1% of, because our general fund budget for 2026 is 96 million, so 1% is roughly a million. The, the revenue number, it's a little bit, I don't have that off the top of my head, but it would probably be in that same ballpark of like 85 million, so roughly 850,000.
And the total of all these supplements are?
It's around 350 for general fund expenses.
350,000?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Weinberg?
I just wanted to make a comment that Commissioner Kerski and Susan spoke yesterday at the city's meeting about the property tax discussion that the legislature is going to be having. And these supplements, I think, just echo what we were trying to explain yesterday. I think you guys did a great job. Thanks for, for your work on that. But the majority of these that are not passed through all relate to public defense or public safety, which I think just indicates the, the rising need and the, the fact that our other offices are not asking for supplements, are coping with the growth of the county. And it just, I think, shows how public safety is just such a larger use of our budget dollars.
So the next steps, maybe just to, to remind you of the process, December 2nd, there will be an agenda item to just get, receive authorization to post notice of budget hearing, but the budget hearing to be scheduled for December 16th. So I'll be back in front of you in mid-December to actually request permission to do these supplements at that time.
Thank you, Susan. December 16th is going to be a busy day. All right. Moving on, a disc, briefing of, yeah, going on here. Discussion of draft resolution establishing 2026 elected department head annual salaries. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. Every year around this time, you start discussing an annual resolution for elected department head salaries. I've attached a copy of last year's resolution to your materials. As a reminder, there are two main sections. One that establishes the base salaries that are above statutory minimums and another that establishes the salaries for incumbents. Today is a briefing only on the resolution that's been drafted for your initial discussion. The intent of this was to give you some sort of framework to guide your discussion and allow some feedback before finalizing the resolution, which we're currently intending to schedule for December 16th. One main change since last year's resolution is the county did complete its compensation study. You might recall from some of our discussions over the past year that the recommendation for elected officials was not only to set a base salary, but also to set a maximum. So the attached draft resolution for you includes that framework. Those salaries that are listed in that draft resolution show exactly what was recommended by McGrath Consulting when she presented her materials in March this last year. For establishing salaries for incumbents, what the numbers that we've used there are following a similar approach to what we've done over the past two years to incorporate a level that's near what full-time staff would receive. In this case, those numbers reflect a 7.7% increase over the current year's salaries. And the reason that we use that 7.7% for this initial discussion only is that's comparable to what many full-time staff would receive if they aren't over the maximum of the new salary ranges under the compensation, compensation study. And I just want to clarify that that's also what they would receive over a 15-month period. So it's roughly the 2.5% increase that staff received when the compensation study was implemented for full-time employees on September 27th. It reflects a general increase and the step increase that staff would be eligible for. So it's not what they'll definitely receive, but it's what they were eligible for. All salaries that are here, remember, as we have this discussion, we look to have them be evenly divisible by 26 pay periods. So there is some rounding in there. I have for you, as I have in the past, salaries for your appointed department heads, salaries for the deputies in those departments. This is sort of a different discussion this year because you're looking at whether or not, first, to implement the recommendations from the compensation consultant for those ranges and then to set salaries based on those adjustment in those base salaries. One thing maybe to consider is that, is you can see that the base salaries are, in some cases, a more significant increase than what the past resolution had, just like when you implemented the compensation study for full-time employees, when some of those ranges were more significantly adjusted, you have compression. And what I'm specifically referring to there is for the auditor and the treasurer, those ranges have a base adjustment that's proposed at 125. If you were to implement something where both those incumbents had adjustments within that range, but set still a minimum percentage, you might have a situation where the treasurer and the auditor, whose salaries are currently, you know, roughly 15,000 to 20,000 apart, would become compressed or only a couple thousand apart. Same thing with the register of deeds and the treasurer, right now, or sorry, the register of deeds and the auditor earn very close in salaries, but not the same. So as you make those adjustments, that might be also something you want to take into consideration. Again, initial discussion only to help make some decisions for next month. Are there any questions that I can help answer for you?
All right, before we go to that, just for clarity, December 16th is when this will be voted on by the commission, so we have plenty of time for consideration to it. We would take public comment on this agenda item right now. Anybody want to comment on anything here? Commission, any questions? I guess my only question, you know, we talk about elected department heads, but we also have our non-elected department heads. Carrie, I'm sorry to drop this on you, but what is the lowest salary of our non-elected department head?
Currently, for the lowest level department head, they have different pay grades, but the current lowest base salary is 129,000. For next year, that would be adjusted to 132.
Which department is that?
That would be for pay grade 317. That's the vast majority of your department heads.
Okay, so that's the starting?
That's the starting salary for most department head positions, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Carrie, if you wouldn't mind reminding me, because I've forgotten, when's the last time we did the compensation study?
The last one that specifically incorporated elected department heads was 2006 and '07 for implementation in '08. So it's been a while since those ranges were looked at. In the past, they've been set by pretty much market-based, and then you've considered as you look at incumbent pay, again, what other department heads, what full-time staff receive, what the deputy receives. These base salaries, I should point out, are combination, as recommended by the consultant, are combination of both market as well as where they align with the deputy in that department. So some of them may be a little bit over-market in consideration of the deputy, and I just want people to know that that's not an exact science of what market data would have. And also, as I've explained during past meetings on this, the market data is becoming a little bit more difficult, right? Not every single county of our size in the area has the five elected offices structured like we do. So there's fewer points to compare to.
The bottom line then, it's been almost 20 years since we've had a, quote, "consultant" review our job descriptions and salary-based issues, and this employment market currently is a whole lot different than it was at that time of the country's needs.
Carrie, as we look at revising some of these salary ranges and setting new base salaries, over time, are these elected officials receiving raises, raises, excuse me, at the same rate at which the non-elected department heads are receiving raises?
It depends. The commission has made decisions each year about what to adjust individual incumbents by and whether or not to adjust these base salaries. So it depends, but one of the major factors that the commission has considered over time is what kind of adjustment our full-time staff receiving. And you might recall from the past couple of years, the commission has approved increases for the elected department heads that were very comparable to the appointed, as an overall percentage, that is.
All right. Carrie, thank you. I'm sure you'll be receiving a few phone calls or other questions, but appreciate your time on this.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Consider a petition to compromise county aid lien, DPNO 67347. Sandy, good morning.
Good morning. Sandy Kinder with the commission office. Today I'm here, we've received an application to compromise DPNO 67347 in the amount of $2,682.03 by releasing the property only with no payment from the petitioner. The property is located at 1002 East 17th Street in Sioux Falls. The lien would remain on, in the name of the lienee only. The petitioner in this case is the property owner and not the lienee. The party entered into a contract for deed with the lienee in June of 2020. At that time, there was a lien in the amount of $1,485.23 that existed for human services provided between 2008 and 2013. After they entered into the contract for deed, the lienee incurred additional services for a public defender, bringing the balance to $2,682.03. The lienee later defaulted on the contract. In action to foreclose, the property was filed, and the property was quit claimed back to the petitioner in January of 2025. The petitioner is reselling that property now with the title company when the lien was noted. He was set to close on the 14th, but was unable to. That date has now been changed to the 21st of November. And the petitioner is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Sandy. At this point, we typically will, if the petitioner is here that wants the lien removed, we will take comments from them. You don't have to identify yourself, and you can make comments from where you are. So if you'd like to address the commission about the lien, we would sure take.
Good morning. My name's Dave. I'm the petitioner. Basically, to conclude what.
Certainly talk into the microphone.
Well, conclude what was stated before by Sandy. By conveyance of the contract for deed, it states that he has to pay me all the obligations and payments, and then I will give him legal title. So therefore, since he did not do that, I never gave him legal title, and I always maintained legal title. I've had legal titles on that property since 1975, and I've never had a county laid lien or any county assistance put on my properties or my name before. I wasn't aware of this lien until it was brought about by the title company, so I was never notified that it was put on my property. I, basically, I think at this point, my feeling would be since the contract for deed when it was filed in 2020, they used that to place the lien from Mr. Lopez onto my property. In January of this year, a quit claim, which was filed in February 3rd of this year, the quit claim was filed, which releases and extinguishes any rights that Mr. Lopez had on the property. If that's the case, I don't understand why I can't just extinguish the lien that was on my property too. Any questions?
Commission, any questions of the petitioner? We received all of your paperwork, your timelines, I guess, all the documents that quit claim deed, et cetera, and we're, I think we're aware of the timeline on what happened here. I will turn it over now to the commission for discussion and/or action. Anybody want to start?
Mr. Chair, just a general comment, and I did get a chance to read all the attached documents, and I appreciate you joining us this morning to make your case. It seems like a very strange situation. I had to wonder if.
Say it the least.
Yeah. You know, since the title was technically never in the possession of the renter that you, that you had for a period of time, and, you know, how that lien was put on your property and on you, having a hard time tracing the dots of how that was able to happen. I don't know if maybe someone in the county government or, you know, other, one of my colleagues has some insight about how that process works and if we can avoid similar situations like this in the, in the future.
Other comments? I guess, looking at the history here, we have two different things that happened, some prior to the purchaser of the property, and technically, even when you're buying a property, you don't own it until you make that last payment. Doesn't matter, it's contract for deed or traditional mortgage with a bank. You don't own it until you make that last payment. But, so some money, $1,200 and change roughly, was incurred by the individual buying the property prior to their possession of it, and some of it was incurred after. The purchaser, in my mind, and from the records, paid a lot of money to you as the seller that could have probably came to the county to pay off some of these liens. And for us to put this lien back on that individual with no property backing it, basically is, meaning that probably go away. So I have a hard time with forgiving this entire lien, maybe portion of it, but again, when the individual purchasing the property transferred thousands and thousands of dollars over to the seller that could have come to the county, I'm looking at that thinking we, we should have some right to that money.
I wasn't aware of the lien, so.
I understand, sir. And, you know, that's probably the difference between a quit claim deed and a warranty deed. You know, warranty deed will have a lot more background, and that's where that type of thing is discovered. At least, that's my understanding of contract law. I'm not a real estate attorney, but that's my understanding of it, so.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
I've asked lots of questions of our state's attorney's office regarding this case, because I'm not an expert in this area. And I think you're correct, from what I understand, the, the charges or the liens that were leaned against the buyer that took place prior to the agreement to purchase the home typically would have been discovered by the title company, similar to the situation that Mr. Dave now finds himself in. So those would have been required to have been paid, from what I understand, prior to this agreement. And then the additional charges for the public defender that were incurred during the contract period, if I understand this correctly, typically, if this, if this house had been purchased under a traditional mortgage from a bank, those charges would then be, oh, I'm going to get it wrong, so maybe I shouldn't try to quote it, but it seems likely, based on the information that I've learned from our state's attorney, that the courts would end up probably deciding how this would go. And I think we're given two different options here. We can release or do nothing, and I'm open to discussion about both, but in the interest of fairness, I lean more towards letting the courts decide if Mr. Dave chooses to go that route.
You're looking at selling the property, sir? Is this going to be a contract for deed also?
No.
No? Okay. Lesson learned. Okay.
Yeah, if you're looking at a partial removal, what, what would we do? Just in order so I can try to get my closing taken care of. If not, then I'm going to be out of the sale, and my only obligation at that point would be to have my attorney go back and finish the foreclosure and get everything released from my property and also from Mr. Lopez at that time, so the county wouldn't get anything.
I'd like to comment and say I would be in favor of holding the petitioner harmless and forgiving the entirety of the lien. I don't believe he should be responsible for a lien that was placed on the buyer several years ago, and that responsibility should be on that individual. Just to have a point of clarification, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we're completely forgiving it. The lien will go to the buyer. Is that correct?
Go to Mr. Lopez.
Yep. That was my reading.
That's the way my petition reads.
Yep.
And I just want the property released so I can sell it without that, without the benefits that Mr. Lopez got, and that I never received any of that.
Commissioner Kipley?
I tend to concur with that. I'd make that my motion to release the lien only insofar as the real property with no payment.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to release the lien from the property and put it back on the original purchaser of the property, is that the intent of the motion?
Correct.
Okay. Additional comments? I guess I have one. I'm, I'm going to not be in favor of that. I, you know, with poor relief, we typically will forgive the poor relief if the petitioner was the purchaser, but a lot of these, the balance after 2020 was for a public defender of, I think that's $2,682. You know, the county gets left holding the short end of the stick in this case, and I just don't see that as an equitable solution where, when the purchaser was basically forwarding money, I think there was a $10,000 down payment that could have been applied to some of the, these bills. So I'm, I'm not going to vote in favor of that.
I've expensed way over that.
That's, I understand, sir.
Mr. Lopez got the, Mr. Lopez got personal criminal offense, and I didn't receive any legal representation.
This is in the hands of the commission at this point, okay? They have questions of you, I'll permit that, but comments at this point are, are done. Okay, no additional comments, so I'm going to move.
I'm going to make the same judgment. I've struggled with this. I might be willing to negotiate some solution with the owner, so to speak, but I don't believe it's fair to the community to have to pick up this tab, to be honest, for the delinquent taxes. And I understand part of it's the information that you didn't receive or didn't, whatever reason, but that doesn't help our cost of hiring a public defender in some of these cases. So I'm not in favor of removing it.
I was just noticing, one of the documents in the supporting paperwork was why South Dakota sellers might choose a contract for deed over a traditional mortgage. One of the paragraphs says, "This approach does come with risks, such as the need to maintain clear title and manage tax or insurance obligations during the period." Yeah, it does come with risk. It is a, it is a, on the property owner's side, a generous thing that you're doing in offering a contract for deed, but it does have risks that come with it. So if there's no additional comments, I will ask to call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Blainberg?
No.
Benega?
No.
Kerski?
No. So that will, that fails to compromise the lien. We can do an alternative action at this time, or we can expect full payment on the lien.
Mr. Chair, is there appetite for drawing a line in the timeline of forgiving the amounts that precedes? So is that the, the amount of the 1,485.23? Or someone can help me with which, which was the amount?
Sandy can help you with that.
So the 1,485.23 is for human services, poor relief. 1,196.80 is for attorney services that occurred after the contract was entered.
So just clarifying with Sandy before I make this new motion, if I want to just wipe out that amount that predated, that would be the 1,485.23.
Is what you're forgiving.
Yes.
So the balance due from him would be 1,196.80.
Commissioner Kipley?
Yes, you can sure help me out.
From what I understand, if we were to go down the route of releasing part of, but not all of the lien amount, it might be more logical to forgive, or I'm sorry, to release the amounts prior to the closure, because those would have been required to have been satisfied before Mr. Lopez could have entered this agreement. The buyer, the buyer would have been required to pay to satisfy the lien with the county if it had gone through a traditional title search.
So I think we were just trying to pick a number that is somewhere between zero and the full amount that has a basis and logic of the timeline, and so if you have a read on what that number is, obviously, I'm willing to forgive a partial amount.
I'm struggling to find the sheet now that shows the different lien amounts, but.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I was just, the state of play seems to be, we have two votes for full removal, so if any of the three other votes have a motion to pick the amount that's not full, I think we'll have a majority.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the amounts, and it looks like the public defender costs actually occurred probably after that individual was no longer in the property. Is that safe to assume?
Those dates would be the date that they were recorded with the register of deeds office, I believe.
Okay, okay, the record date, not necessarily a date that they incurred.
The case opening date could have been different.
Okay. So we have a balance on the, on the public defender, on the legal side of 1,196.80, roughly 1,200. 1,200 bucks. Typically, we can, not always, but as a matter of precedence, we'll forgive it at half. So I personally would say if we could collect $600 on the legal and move the balance to the leenee on a personal note, but collect $600 on the property, I would be in favor of that. Is that the kind of number you're looking for, Commissioner?
There's just a couple of variables now, there's the number, and then what is still going to the property, so basically we're asking the applicant to then clean that up before his closing.
Yep, clean it up with 600 bucks and move the rest of the lien back to the leenee, not on the property, but on the individual.
Okay, yes, okay, now I follow you. So I think I can find the language of my original motion, which I'm having trouble in. Okay, really, I'd make a motion to release the lien only insofar as the real property, instead of no payment, with payment of 600, as partial satisfaction.
And the balance to go back to the leenee?
Yes, that is my motion.
I'll second that, excuse me.
Additional comments? Okay, I'm sorry, sir.
No comment?
I'll allow it.
Yeah, basically, I'll write you a check right now for 300, so we can be done with this.
600 is the motion.
I want to close that transaction, I'd just as soon do 300 and be done with it, but otherwise I can wait, lose the sale, and go back through the foreclosure process.
The way the motion sits right now, you would have to write a check for 600, the liens had come off the property and be transferred back to the individual that was attempting to purchase it on the contract for deed. All right, call the roll.
Kipli?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heisey?
Nay.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. So you can work with Sandy, she can help you through the processor. We're now at the opportunity for public comment, anybody from, would like to address the commission on any non-agenda item, this is your opportunity, we allow five minutes for any individual and up to 30 minutes total. Good morning.
Good morning, Commission, my name is Kathy Brackdelsbauer, resident of our lovely county, and I want to first thank you for your public service and your ability to sit still for so many hours at these meetings, and I just want to call your attention to something that I emailed each of you about before, and so I'm hoping that you're considering it, and I hope you will do it. And what it is, is about property tax, and of course, there's a lot of talk about property tax, and it's going to be a topic for quite a while now, especially during the legislature, but my contention is that people don't have full information about their property tax, the public doesn't, and neither do most of the legislators that I've talked to about it. And that is because people don't know that we already have some property tax relief going on already, and it's been going on ever since Janklow was the governor, and people don't remember that, or don't realize that it's still coming every year off their property taxes, and the main reason I think people don't know is that it's not on the tax bill. And the way the current bills are written, you can't even figure it out from the tax bill, you have to call the office and find out what's the rate for the non-owner occupied, and then take the difference and multiply it by your taxable value. So it's not that hard to figure out if you have the information, but on the other hand, even having the information on there is not enough, because people don't know we have the property tax relief, and they need to know we have it. And I think that would be just really basic information that everybody should have for the upcoming conversation. So I'm asking that you direct the, the people who make the bills, who design these, to add a line explaining you have X amount is taken off your bill because of the current property tax relief that we have. And then people will have full disclosure about their property taxes, which they don't have all the information now. So that's my request. Actually, if you, I've been following this issue for, at least since 2004, that's why I have all these here, and for a while, we had the non-owner occupied rate was on there, but not recently, it hasn't been on there for quite a few years now, but even then, it wasn't enough information. But I think the people at the office there, they're very helpful, and I think they would want people to know, and so hopefully they could add that line on there, because it's not a huge computation to figure it out, and they could, we have computers now, and they could figure that out and make a line on there, and then people would be more, people would understand more about property taxes, because we, right now, you look at your bill, you don't even know what your full property tax is, because you don't know how much has already been forgiven by the property tax relief. And so the other thing I would like is not only if we do that here in Minnehaw County, but you must have connections to the statewide organization of county commissioners, and you could be encouraging them to do this statewide. That's my request. Any questions?
Kathy, we appreciate your comments, I will be replying to the email, you and I have communicated already, but thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you very much for your interest in this, because I know you're going to be involved in these discussions about property tax, so you might as well have the full information yourselves and help the rest of the citizens have this kind of information. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comments? And make sure, Kathy, if you don't mind, that you signed in, did you do that already? Thank you. Okay, moving on then to commission liaison reports. Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, starting from the most recent, last night, Commissioner Benega and Tom Greco and I were at the towns and townships meeting for Minnehaw County, good turnout, lots of good discussion, and just a big shout out to all of our township supervisors and the work that they do. Also, just want to mention the appreciation that they express for working with Jacob Maris in the highway department. And then I wanted to mention that it's Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, so there have been a number of activities scheduled this week, but today in the concourse in the Human Services Building, there will be some vendors, some local organizations available to continue to increase awareness. Yesterday, I was able to listen to a forum from Midwest Street Medicine, Commissioner Kipli was there also, maybe he has more update available. I guess that's it for now.
Commissioner Benega?
Yes, I've got a couple, three that I attended, been in some master planning conferences, and we're continuing that process to figure out our campus needs in the future, because it's going to take some long-term planning and obviously some resources to make that happen. Did attend, along with most of you, the Veterans Day Seminar and recognition, if you will, on the 11th, well-attended, I was amazed at how many older veterans were in attendance, in fact, there was a couple of people that were World War II veterans, which is amazing to me. Wish we could get more public input and public participation with that. Met this morning with Commissioner Kipli, with the Public Advocates Office about some administrative software conversations. I've been to jail twice in the last week, and thankfully I got in easily, but not out. We were discussing some of the budget-related issues with the warden and the food budget and the special diets, the daily attendance is significantly higher than we thought our budget would originally be posted as, and then we're already starting to work on the jail contract, which doesn't come due for about a year, on some of the medical services we're required to pay. So that along with the building construction, meetings with JDC, that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yesterday, I was at a meeting with the mayor of Sioux Falls and several other community mayors, school board superintendents, and area legislators, and kind of going over the property tax issues that may be coming up in the upcoming legislative session to public comment earlier. I would encourage people, the elderly and disabled primarily, to really reach out to our auditor's office and find out what programs are available. For example, I wasn't aware that the city, if you qualify for the state elderly tax freeze, and the way I believe it works is the city also refunds up to $500 of the city property tax if you qualify for the state tax freeze. That's something that's fairly new, a few years old at best, but a heck of a deal, their average payment back to the elderly tax freeze applicants is over 350 bucks for the last several years. So there's a lot of programs out, the numbers have changed, as far as home value, as far as income guidelines, we, being the people that monitor the program, feel that there's going to be a lot more people eligible for the elderly and disabled tax freeze that have been eligible in the past, and I just encourage people to reach out to the county and figure out if you can qualify for that, so. With Commissioner, I think all the Commissioner, Commissioner Kipli, I don't mean to single you out, were you at the Veterans Day Center? Okay, full-time job gets in the way sometimes, I get it, but that room was packed at the Alliance, I don't think there was a whole lot of room for many more people, and that's just a fantastic thing to see the community support for veterans and military, so, great program, and definitely worth the time to check out. Tomorrow morning, I have, I'm the secretary treasurer for the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, I have a board meeting, executive board meeting in the morning, and then over the noon hour, we have a membership board meeting, or membership meeting in Del Rapids tomorrow afternoon, so I will be doing Sioux Metro Growth Alliance work, so. That's all I have for now, we meet next week, and next week is the week of Thanksgiving. Any non-action commission discussion?
I think this would fall in that category of non-action commission discussion, just to piggyback on what you mentioned about the increased eligibility for elderly tax freeze, just wanted to point out that we're happy about that, that the legislature has done that, but it is also another example of how, as policies change, it increases the cost to the county. The amount of time and effort that our treasurer's office spends on reviewing all the applications for the state to be eligible, for people to be eligible, for the benefit also for the city, ends up just costing us more money, and depending on what kind of increase we see in those applications, could have resulted in a need of more personnel. So it's a great thing for people who fall in that category, but does have a big impact on our budget.
And while it is a great thing for the people that qualify for, that tax doesn't go away, I hate to say this, but I'm going to say it, I mean, it's, the tax that isn't paid by them is paid by the rest of us, so, I mean, it's not a, it's not a zero-sum game that that number is distributed back to the people that do pay taxes, so, but we help the ones that we can, or that need the help and do our best, so. Other comments? All right, we have an executive session, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn from the, or to enter into executive session for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law 125, 2134, and 6. So moved. Motion a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. We are adjourned to executive session next door. I have nothing to sign, right?